Hmm, which works.
The city borough's mine.
Is that what we're learning?
It's a good way.
That's great. Alright, well, we're all here thanks for Kevin. So with us today, but everybody else is here, so great. We have no visitor, sorry if I know, is that maybe? Um, and we have our agenda in front of us. And if there are no changes or additions from the, or questions about bills or anything, or if anybody had any, it's about our minutes from last time. Entertaining motion.
Support.
Support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, moving on.
Super duper, we are distributing free take and create kits. These are, um, they teach you to sew. And so they come with instructions, there are videos online. They are felt mittens and heart shapes that you then sew. There are ribbons and there are buttons and six, um, patterns or si- six crafts that you can make from each kit. And this is part of the Earlhead Library System and Minnesota Art and Cultural Heritage Fund that makes that possible. Those are a lot of fun. We have some over there if you guys want to take some home for anyone visiting over the weekend. I've been doing a lot of work with sundue this month and, um, we had Jeremy come in and update our public computers. So the strategy right now is that we will completely replace staff computers. They need to be, uh, they cannot be halfway fixed to make them work. And this will allow us to do that rolling replacement strategy. So the staff computers, uh, will be replaced. We're getting the bids and I'll bring those to you guys so that we can take a, uh, have a, a look and a talk about what I'd like to purchase. The, uh, public computers can get a little repair, a little upgrade thing that makes it happy for, uh, installing the Windows eleven update. So those we will be able to extend their life a little while longer while we focus in on the staff computers and then we can return to the public side next year or later in this, uh, upcoming year and decide whether we want to look at some different choices or sort of stay with PC Mac like we have right now or whatever arrangement of devices that can be a, a next phase. Um, Jeremy was here working with me this week to install anti malware and antivirus software on all of our devices that can receive it. That will be, um, an annual increase. That will be an increase that has a subscription license that would increase our budget. I think it's at eleven or thirteen hundred dollars for automation line. But more to come on that. We, so that was with Jeremy and that was great and, uh, we're, we're still moving along on those things. We had a fiber optics box thing in our server closet and the fan was dying on that. And that is serviced by Northeast Service Cooperative who came out this week as well. And, um, they fixed that. And we just had today Great Lakes alarm came up because we've had, uh, starting last week, we were getting many trouble signals and false alarms on the building and, um, burglary alarms in the middle of the night and all kinds of things. But it's related to a sensor on the front door that, um, was not reporting. And then we confirmed that it wasn't a reporting issue. It needed to be updated. So that happened today and I'm hopeful because I like to sleep at night.
Yes.
Um, so that's technology leading into the, the building with the alarm sensors, I suppose. Um, the safety door. I know you had questions at the last meeting, the hardware has been updated and it is now lockable.
Okay.
That's what I think I have for you today. Any questions? Okay. Great, thanks.
Great. And we had, I appreciate all the information we got. I think you, like, oh yeah, this is good. Should have, I'm going through that. We can't, on statements, does anybody have any comments or thoughts about that? Okay. Alright, then we have our, our budget update, which is good news.
Yeah, so, um, the city finalized insurance rates in November. And it's an exciting year because there is a decrease. The decrease was about four percent for singles and two point four percent for families. So our budget was adjusted down, um, nine thousand six hundred dollars, which is a two percent decrease from our original request. We requested a nine point eight percent decrease and we are now at a seven point eight percent, um, increase for the coming year. There's nothing to do and this does not change our lo- level of library service. So that's, that's it.
That's good.
Okay.
Now for the taproot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, we had talked about how our volunteers who like to take care of our gardens are not able to continue and we have not been able to find volunteer replacements. Um, the board recommended that we look at professional services. I have only been able to find one. I conferred with a couple of people at City Hall and, uh, members sitting at the table here. And this is, this is all that I, I was only able to find one company. Um, the, for bid laws or contracting laws for a city of our size, if a contract is under ten thousand dollars, then, uh, we are, we try to get two quotes or more if practical. And in this case, I'm not sure if it's practical for me to provide you a quote for someone in Duluth if we're going to have regular maintenance on our garden. So in that case, unless anyone knows of another landscaping company, this is the quote that I have. This is, um, Taproot Landscaping, which is owned and operated by Alyssa Burns, who did the original, um, landscaping for us around this building at the twenty eleven update. She's very passionate about this garden and would do such a great job for us. Her proposal, uh, starts with what it would take to reclaim the garden. And then after that, the annual, um, maintenance is listed here. And just as we're starting to move into the new year, that's, um, a fee that we don't, that we didn't include in next year's budget that will be recurring. So when we look at the twenty twenty six budget, we have these two increases that do represent a one percent increase that, uh, we can talk about later.
She's really good. There's really no reason to hunt down anybody else.
No.
Yeah, I would agree. Think of anybody else who's doing anything right now who would do it.
So for this year then, since it's not in the budget, with the amount of cash reserves?
So this, this is a good question before you make your motion that we can't, you can just have it direct me to take it out anyway. You have healthy reserves in both places. Um, but you could also do it this year as a one-time thing that has the reclamation and then the maintenance throughout that year and then plan it into the budget for recurring expense after.
Oh, I see. Yeah. Makes sense. Um, yeah, I would think that was good. Does anybody want to make that motion?
I'll, I'll move. I'll second.
Alright.
Is the motion specific to the?
Yeah, to doing the, uh, pulling out the money now and then having an image.
Two fifteen this year and then two eleven. Thanks. Who moved? Sorry, and seconded.
I, I moved and Sue seconded.
I sat silently.
Pardon?
And I sat silently.
Yes.
And you did it really well. Yeah. Alright, all those in favor? Good, now on to the review. So. Sarah?
So, as I mentioned last month, I think as the board, you know, we have a policy for reviewing the director. I think it would be good to resurrect that practice. And it's good to give feedback. It's a good way to have a dialogue regularly with the director about what our expectations of the board are. Um, and how the director is meeting those expectations. So, and knowing that she's also reviewed by the city, we don't want to duplicate that work. So we want it to be something that looks at different than the city's review process. Because that process should stay, obviously.
I think before we proceed, we should kind of talk about whether we are a governing board or an advisory board. Governing board, and I'm looking at the, the Minnesota Public Library Trustee Handbook as well as, I, I did look at some of the library law and statute. Um, the governing board, a governing board hires the librarian. The governing board is also in charge of all the finances of the library, of personnel policies, et cetera, et cetera. Um, we do not do that. And I don't know about anybody else, but I personally do not want to do that. An advisory board, as far as when it comes to evaluating or, or doing a, an evaluation of the librarian or a review of the librarian, advises those, the, advises the administrative board or the administrators. And, you know, basically, we could say, you know, we think Amanda, we believe Amanda is doing a wonderful job, A, B, C, D, and E, and we pass that on to you. And we do not do the review. Does that make sense?
Yes, I mean, I see that.
Okay. So my point is, first of all,
Yeah.
let's decide what kind of board we are. And then let's not talk so much about the review, but rather what kind of advice, shall we say, we would give the reviewers. Does that make sense?
If we were to decide we're more on the advisory side than on the governance side?
Yes, and we are because we don't take, we're not in charge of the finances.
We do approve the.
We do approve.
Kind to do.
And the budget.
Yeah, because the monies are coming from the county and the.
Yeah, we're not in charge of the monies.
We request them in the form of the budget, which is approved, which we then are physically responsible for.
Yeah.
Well.
Can be.
Well, going back to the, going back, are we, do we have, I don't think we have the ability to, or the power to fire Amanda.
No.
That's, that's through the city, so that, that puts me more on the advisory. We, we can't, yeah, as, as.
But we do are supposed to hire the director.
We don't directly hire the director, I don't think, do we? I was, I've not been around for hiring, so I don't know.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah, more joint process.
Yeah, I mean, we have, it doesn't all upon, it doesn't fall upon us or do we advise? And are part of the hiring team.
Well, we definitely would be part of the search. To find it.
Here's, here's the duty of the board if it is, and I did look at parts. Many of the boards in Minnesota are governing boards, but there are some advisory boards. So among the things that the library, you know, and, um, a governing board does, we not only appoint a qualified library director and other staff as necessary, establish the compensation of employees and remove any of them for cause. Okay, with the approval of the council or the board of the county, the library board may purchase grounds and wreck a library building thereon. I mean, this, I think goes beyond a lot of what we do. I mean, we don't hire the library staff. We don't approve their compensation.
Although it says as necessary.
Well, now Ramsey County and Anoka County have advisory boards. And their powers and duties are, this is the Ramsey County Board, but it's the same for Anoka. Um, the Ramsey County Library Advisory Board shall provide advice and make recommendations on matters pertaining to county library services. The Ramsey County Library Advisory Board shall provide recommendations regarding integrated county service delivery that impacts or is enhanced by library services and, uh, and so on. Okay, it's a very, Minnesota is not very clear. I did look up and this may or may not be relevant, so I won't go into it unless you're interested. Maine has a library trustee hand board that talks about what the advisory board does. In, it's in Maine, not in Minnesota. So.
And well, this, I mean, I don't have my manual with me, but I, I'm sure it must say within there what it is. I don't have it off the top of my head.
Under our, the joint agreement between the county and the city define it?
Well, what I, um, found in the bylaws here, um, duties of the board of trustees, determine number, uh, seven different items, so I'm willing to read all seven, but if you get bored or.
Oh, please.
Number one, determine the policy of the library and develop the highest possible degree of operating efficiency in the library. Number two, select and hire competent library director.
Yeah.
Number three, advise in the preparation of the budget. Approve it and make sure that adequate funds are provided to finance the approved budget. Number four, through the director, supervise and maintain buildings and grounds as well as regularly review various physical building needs to see that they meet the requirements of the total library program. Number five, maintain a long-range plan for the achievement of service and administrative goals. Number six, study and support legislation which will bring about the greatest good to the greatest number of libraries. Number seven, cooperate with other public officials and boards and maintain vital public relations. So it's kind of a mix.
It's kind of a, well, that sounds more advisory, really, because it doesn't get into personnel matters. It doesn't, um, among other things. But it used the word hire.
They did use the word hire.
Much in the same way, I suppose it's kind of like how you are with your administrator, as we are. In terms of like, we're approving the budget and we do all that and we do, we would do the hiring, you know, if that were to come about. Um, but like the day-to-day mechanics of running the city is not, we don't get into that. Although, you know, if a personnel has problems, I mean, they follow the chain of command and it doesn't with us. So, and that way, you know, and I guess we also.
That's the city council.
Yeah, it's the council, I'm sorry, it's the council, that's what we would do. And I assume it must be similar, uh, county level as well.
Well, the reason I bring this up is I, I think Sarah makes a really good point, or, or Anna made the point anyway of not duplicating.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And I think that we can do that with, well, what we have begun here at least when I was, unfortunately I dropped this and everything. Before I could.
Yeah.
They just yield out the cards.
So that really, I, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking it might well be more appropriate in, from my, from my point of view, maybe not from anybody else's, but from mine. Um, that we perhaps do sort of an evaluation, but ultimately you're doing the review, performance review. And we essentially advise, does that make sense to say advise?
Yeah, I mean, eventually, I mean, my thought is we, we do our piece, we do our piece. And then we, we would give that to Mike or Rabina or whoever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Historically, we've done this, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And historically, because I don't have the history, was it a real review or was it more of an advisory thing essentially to say, you know, she's doing a, he, he or she is doing a good job in, in a war? We think that the library director is, could perhaps do more, I don't know, do more better PR or do better programming or, you know, have better movies for the winter.
Well, you know, we, I, I don't think any of us were there for the last review.
Amanda was.
Except Amanda.
I, I do remember us looking over the review that was used the time before, which was pretty much duplicated of what the city did. And that's, and we had that conversation, why are we doing the exact same? For whatever reasons, that was a couple of years ago and then we dropped it. Um, we, we made some decisions and then all of a sudden here we are a couple of years later saying like, well, maybe we should.
Well, I mean, I'm not, I'm not against some kind of a, a review, but I don't think we need to duplicate. And I don't think it's our job to decide, um, you know, who gets a raise and how much. All of that. So I think that puts us more in the category of advisory. I mean, we are the board, we do have opinions and, and from what we see, you know, that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I see inconsistencies and conflicts within the policies and it's probably a conversation we should have with Mike Roth as well.
Okay.
Um, I mean, because we actually did not hire Amanda. The city hired Amanda.
Right.
And when we went through that process, there was a little bit of pushback from Mike. I'm just like, wait, what? You guys don't do the hiring? And it's like, well, that's a good idea to be involved. And he's like, okay, who wants to be involved? And, you know, there was a good number of people who wanted to be involved.
Right, exactly. No, I mean, I think.
So it's, it's a cooperative thing, but as far as like the law or the actual authority is concerned, I think that's in the city. So it seems more advisory, but, um, but I think our review is very important still. And it doesn't have to be authoritative or punitive, it's just a collaborative, you know.
Yeah.
And so, but I still.
Conversation.
Yeah, and I, and I think it would still behoove us to have Mike involved in that.
Sure.
And he can certainly give more perspective, um.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's really great that Sarah raised the question.
Well, I, I think if we look at what like the city was, uh, was doing in their review, um, you know, those are things you can be like, yep, you know, a good chunk of that isn't anything that we know about or. We care, but it's operations, right?
And our role is more government.
Yeah.
And not specific to the library. I think when we talked about this review before, we wanted things that were more specific to this job. This, this is not.
Yeah, and so Sarah, did you start putting one together? Is that what I saw in my packet that I?
Well, and if I might. My memory is that the review should be based on, uh, the strategic plan that the board develops. And that's kind of your basis for, uh, what to go off of. And so that's what we developed and, um, and that would be the, the guide in person, whatever the city does.
Yeah, that way it's not duplicated.
Right, yeah.
I'm thinking back to why we walked away from this before, because we spent a lot of time on it. And I think we decided that it wasn't fair to review Amanda on a year of COVID.
Yeah, that was right.
Isn't that where we, why we walked away from it? It wasn't that we weren't up to it, it was that it wasn't.
Yeah, there's too much stuff in the air, there's.
It was just crazy. It wasn't, no, that makes perfect sense.
Yeah, and that was, that's what started it. And then knowing that, you know, looking at what the review is that she was getting from the city anyway.
Yes, that's.
That's where we're all, you know, what, what are we doing?
Yeah, yeah.
Like she's had a review and we're going to review her too. Yes. Double review. Um, but anyway, getting to what, so you put this piece together, right?
Yes, so I took what was in policy G.
Yeah.
And put it into a format that was a little more legible and didn't include a lot of the operational.
Yeah. But I thought that was what I was seeing and I was thinking like, yeah, we'll just, I mean, kind of a mini review, but it's no review, it's still talking about the things that we care about as, um, members of the library trustees, so.
And nicely specific to the position as opposed to this.
Exactly, exactly.
And then, and of course, we can adopt any method we want.
Right.
This is the.
That's the policy.
Yeah, it's right.
Is it also not in here?
No, it is.
It is, it's in the next pages.
Okay. Beyond this one even?
Yeah.
Oh, then get that.
So Amanda, when you look this over, does this feel like a fair representation of what you're doing?
I think it is a very nice look at the director's role.
I mean, relative to us.
Um, who does?
The trustees.
Yeah.
Um, I would want you to be very careful to look through each and every bullet point and ask yourself, can I answer this question without being, um, escorted behind the desk? Or can I answer this question without having to hear from Amanda first? Um, I think that what you're wanting is to provide feedback, um, actually, I should ask, what is your goal? What, what do you want me to hear from you, um, in this format and, um?
Well, see, there are certain things, like the very first one. The library director made an effort to connect with library patrons in a positive way by recommending titles, listening to their comments, needs, et cetera. Okay, I'm a library patron, I'm a frequent patron. And I might, if Amanda's at the desk, talk to her about that. But other than my own experience, let's say, I don't know if she does it with everybody. Really, it's true, because I'm, I'm not here to see that. Some of this is, is too specific.
Too specific.
Yeah.
But, but it's a, we could probably smooth out.
I think you're right.
What we're doing here.
Absolutely right.
And some of its wording, the second one, the director sought out opportunities to share library information with patrons. I would just change that with the community through radio interviews, book talks and other library promotions. I don't know about book talks, but certainly I know Amanda does radio interviews.
Yeah.
And there are promotions, I mean, you know, it's things like that. So that's a, that's a picky one, but I think it's important, would be important to change that to community. For example, I'm not trying to edit all of them.
Yeah, I mean, and I think we can, you know, go through and I, I think these categories, like, if we look at the broader category that we're involved, I think that those all make sense.
Yeah.
That's definitely our world, like, we can speak to those things, um, to some degree. And maybe, you know, since Sarah has synthesized this down some, you know, we can take it on ourselves to go the next step, maybe like eliminating some of these and then coming together with like, okay, here's where we're all coming together and agreeing, like, these points within this area are things that we would like to have in the review.
You know, this is a little, well, it's not really a side issue because we already brought it up about hiring and that the board did not hire the library director. I, I hope that at some point we can maybe change the bylaws or something to say that when the library director is, what, in the process of being hired during that process, we, the board, have a role to play and maybe be a little bit specific that, I don't know, maybe we would sit in on interviews or we would review resumes or, or whatever it might be. We don't have to decide that all tonight, but I would certainly like to have that maybe in a change in the bylaws or something so that we really have, um, a role in that. And perhaps too, and I don't know, I don't, I'm just going to throw it out there. I don't know how this, how much sense this makes, but, or, you know, other, let's say, let's say somebody decides to fire the library director. It's not our job, I guess, to fire the director if we don't hire the director. But we should have at least some knowledge of what's going on, if that sort of thing is proposed or happens. So again, I'm thinking, let's, let's kind of do a big, let's just think about that. Maybe we can come back after we take care of this. We can come back and consider some of those.
Yeah, and I think I would, yeah, I'll go over what we have already and see, go back and look through agendas and things like that and just to get an idea of like what has been happening.
Right.
And then I'll talk with Mike too and just clarify my understanding. I can definitely bring that back.
You know, and there might be, there might be, as we, as we go forward and think about some of these things, there might be some other roles, like, I don't know, let's say, somebody proposes to build another new library facility at some point in. somebody proposes to build another new library facility at some point in time. Um, we should have input on that. And we might think about some of these things that are not happening right now, but could happen within the next ten, fifteen years.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yes, I will.
Yeah.
Take that and I'll talk with Mike and go back and see what we've done in the past and check it out. So what did we do?
And if anybody objects to that, could you just say, tell me? I know this is Minnesota nice.
I mean, I think, well, Nancy, I just think we'll, we'll see what we already have the capacities.
Yeah.
What is, what is our role? What has been our role? Like, you know, maybe we've been outside of it or maybe we've been inside of it.
Yeah, I think it would be, I would personally, coming into this as somebody who didn't know anything and sometimes still feels she doesn't know anything. Um, I would like to know what our role is.
Yeah. And have it aligned to what's written down. Either we change the way we do business or we change the bylaws.
No, I, I really.
Oh, that, that's very.
I mean, here it says, we, we, we hired the library director. Well, we didn't hire the library.
Yeah, they certainly need to be updated. They're first published in ninety-three and last.
Oh, my gosh.
In two thousand fifteen. So. Out of date. But I, um, Erica sent out some really wonderful links to videos, which kind of help. Uh, she did. Give a understanding of roles and responsibilities. Um, and also to answer Amanda's question of what we're looking for, what the purpose is. In my mind, it's just kind of the dialogue, the back and forth. Feedback. And I feel like we have opportunities to do that monthly.
Yeah.
Um, and so a part of me feels like an annual review is kind of just jumping hoops. Um, but I think it is important to have a formal process and to have you know, documentation and goals and review those and, and that sort of thing as well.
If the city does an annual review.
I may do.
Then I think it's important that we at least have an opinion to give the city.
Yeah, and maybe that, that would be our thing too, is as we develop this. And maybe, and like, like Dave was saying, you know, we have, we do have this opportunity monthly to have these conversations, but it is still good to have that once a year thing.
Yeah.
And maybe what we can do is try to align ours with the city so that we can drop ours in as they're doing the review. So you know, Mike can go into that with our information too, you know, even though it doesn't necessarily.
Wouldn't align, it wouldn't completely align because we can't talk about personnel matters. We don't know about that.
That's not our.
Uh, there are, you know, other operational things that, that we, we don't know about. We're not privy to, we can't. We can't comment out of our own knowledge.
Yeah, that'd be good for him to know, though, what, what we see.
Maybe this review really is how the administrator works with the board and prepares for the board and provides us with information.
Yeah, well, that's.
Exactly.
There is, um, there, I, uh, it's been used in several different churches and I, I pulled it out of some articles, um. And it's what we use with, uh, my church board. Yeah, for the last couple of years is, is we do a two-way. And we ask three questions. What do you want? Where do you want more from me? Or do you want less for me? And what do you want me to keep doing the same? So it's, uh, you know, so she says, okay, I need you guys to, I'm carrying the ball here. You guys need to, uh, you know, pull up some of your stuff, step up and bring some of the stuff or, you know, um. And we can say, well, it sounds like you're really focused in this one area and it's, and it's, uh, pulling things, pulling time and attention because she's only one person to, that she needs to, we need to figure out together how she can like all that or empower us to help or empower the staff to help, you know?
Yeah.
So I think, yeah, along with, well, in these things, so it's, where do we want more from her, where, you know, and also from, you know, and, and of the meetings, uh, you know, okay, well, we really missed this last year. Last year as the board, we weren't paying attention or she wasn't paying attention and, you know.
Yeah.
So we really need to make sure that every month we check in on this.
Yeah, well, I think it's, I think it's pretty fair that Amanda gets, or the director, whoever that is, gets to, um, what, I want to evaluate, but.
Provide feedback.
Yeah, provide feedback. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Sarah.
When, uh, when you said administrator, you meant administrator, right?
I, I meant director.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Because that's, I was like, do we?
Yeah.
Mike is willing to come to the library board and discuss.
Use the wrong word there.
Okay, just making sure. So, at times I think that could be helpful too. It's not always relevant to our role, but I think it can, just that perspective can help us understand our role too.
Yeah, if we are an advisory board, then, um, I, I don't know, I guess it's fair to ask Amanda what she would like from us.
Well, I think in any way it would be good. Sure. That's, that's what we want. We want that to work for her. There's no point. Care. Like, you don't, you don't do a review, not do a review, but it's important for her. But.
I definitely want you to have an avenue for communicating feedback to the director that feels comfortable for everyone. And that allows us to be thoughtful in a thorough way. Um, I think we can come to our board meetings monthly and provide some thoughts or feedback, but to get everybody's thoughts and feedback on a, on the topic could be helpful. Um, I'm very interested in the format that Sarah's choosing, that it's not intended to rate the director, like, you know, five stars out of however many, um, but it really is. What are we feeling are the strengths in a particular area and what are we feeling are areas of improvement or refinement? One of the things that I thought of when I was looking through this was, um, I, I almost wonder, if I could get my thread back. Is the library performing the way, when you think of your, your dream library, there's the strategic plan, right? Where we say, what would the, the most amazing, incredible library for our community possibly be? And let's think about it as though it's in the future, five years from now. And then let's make a plan that's going to incrementally help us get there. But then I think there's room also for us to step back and go, what, like, comments of the strengths in this area, like what are you loving about the library and where is it performing really well? What are we seeing as this library's strengths? What are we seeing as this library's weaknesses? And how can the director help us cultivate that, that picture? It, it, can this tool in any way help inform um, the daily operation picture as opposed to incrementally moving forward? Can it? I'm not sure, but can you, can you kind of feel the difference of what, what those questions are like? And then I just want to make sure that the tool is useful and usable for you all, uh, as I mentioned earlier. Just making sure that you feel that you can comment on the sections that are there so that, um, the, the feedback can be collected and delivered. And I can share with you that the city's new evaluation process um, has room for your feedback to come in and be incorporated. Uh, there is in here the manager's self-review. There's a section in here that's specific to my departmental responsibilities, including collaborating with the board. And I could imagine that any feedback you'd be willing to give could be used in that area to reflect your, um, expect, any expectations that could come out of the feedback that you're providing, positive and negative. And then in that way, the, um, the administrator would be responsible for helping the director meet those expectations.
I think in there, there's sort of an overall. What's the overall score? Like, how, how do we feel that you're doing overall? And I think that maybe that's what we could do too, just so it can functionally fit into. We can give this whole thing, but maybe have an overall like that we can give to Ravina. That's the person who's doing the HR stuff for the city. So that will fit into her little matrix there as well.
And I, I think too, as we, as we're going through these, a lot of them are really good, but, you know, some of them seem kind of, I don't know. The library director used proper grammar and tone. And the library staff, and when she drank her tea, she had her little pinky up.
Yeah, I mean, I was thinking that what we could do is really each of us, you know, can go through these and just sort of mark. The ones that we feel like these are good, we should have this. Not so much. And then we can come back again and go over it and be like, okay. Let's refine for each category, what we.
Yeah.
Really think are important.
And, and, and really to, 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 I don't know, maybe I'm beating a dead horse, but to the, the whole thing, there's, some of them are so terribly specific. Again, communication, the library uh, director responded to communication with library patrons personally and thoughtfully. I don't know that. I'd have to be in here twenty-four, well, the library's not open twenty-four seven, but I'd have to be.
Something of a survey to get those kind of questions answered.
Yeah, I, I don't know that that's our role either. I mean, I, we're, we're looking at a more global. I like what Amanda said about, let's imagine the library in the future.
Yeah. And maybe as we're going, not only striking the ones that we
Yeah.
don't like, we can just add in what makes.
I am so glad that Sarah did this though, because it is a wonderful place to start.
I helped us think about it.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's great. Mr. Mills, you have something more to add?
So homework for next time is to go through this and, um, either strike or change, edit. And just bring those suggestions back to the full board.
Yeah.
To share and discuss some.
And I know in some of the stuff I was reading, they were talking about having a, you know, maybe a subset of us doing the review, but I actually do think it would be best for us to do it as.
A subset of, how many people are we?
If we have a forum, it's an official meeting.
Yeah.
And I don't think, I want to deliver a review to an employee at an official meeting.
No, we would have a closed meeting.
Okay.
We can do that for reviews.
Yeah. Anything that's personnel like that. Like, once we're beyond this and we're actually talking about stuff, then we have to close the meeting.
Well, we don't have to. We can, um.
Well.
And it needs to be in consult with the employee.
Right.
Um, on whether or not it would be open.
Does she?
Which most employees wouldn't, right. Most employees would not want that. It's just that, um, that's the stipulation.
Yeah, and I guess I wouldn't want that.
I wouldn't recommend it.
No.
In, in the old days, our board meetings were in this room and lovely and the public could attend but didn't. And now it's streamed and archived forever on the internet. And so for that reason, I would be less comfortable with an open meeting. To close a meeting, logistically speaking, you would need the city attorney and the administrator on board. So logistically, there, there may be some things that we need to work through. Um, including how to get all of your feedback compiled, if I'm not available to do that. Um, Mike has mentioned a few times that there's a consultant working with the city and her name is Ravina Claxton and she is available uh, for our board for a fee to consolidate, um, your feedback for you. If you want to go down that avenue, but maybe you just want to start with what's the, what are we, what is the tool, what are we wanting? And then we can figure out how logistically.
Right.
Make it work in terms of closing meetings and all of that. I would say that if you are on board in supportive of delivering this information to the administrator um, in a timeline and working cooperatively to integrate their interview, uh, their review process with your feedback. You would want to adopt something where everything was completed somewhere around, um, November. For the timeline of, of what they're doing for the city, November, December, January.
Yeah. Plenty of time.
We've got ten months.
And I know Mike would love your feedbacks.
Yeah, that's great. And I'll, I'll. Yeah. All right, so I think we're at a fair point, uh.
So at this point, you all are going to markup?
Yep.
Do you want to each send me your thing and I make a new fresh one or how would you, what would be useful? What would be the useful thing to show up in the board packet next month?
Good.
Good question. We'd get it done faster if we submitted it rather than started just going over our ideas at a meeting last time.
I was trying to think about getting suppose most of us could stop or something.
Okay, well, and I think if we're going to submit it, let's have a date at which we should submit it.
So like, you usually send the packet a week before. Maybe before that.
A week before that or ten days before that or?
Yeah, because if she's gonna.
It's the Thursday before that I need to get the board packet out. So if I had things by the Tuesday, the week before, like what is the, what is the? In January, it's the fourth Thursday.
So the meeting's the twenty-seventh?
The meeting is the twenty-third. And so if I had content by the fourteenth, I should have time to, to
Okay.
Create some kind of a composite or compile it.
Yeah.
Or your meeting.
That worked for everyone? All right.
You say the fourteenth?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the fourteen, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Quarter through the.
And I will.
I mean.
Yeah, well, I'll talk it through. This will be out there, but yeah, yeah. All right, well, if there's nothing more, anybody have anything more? Then I'm staying retired. Thanks, everybody. We all have more work.
Oh, we're just so busy and so far behind. It should have been like a week ago. This is, I'm in a perfect.